Please, candidates forum. My name is Mari Allen and I am the president of the Mill Valley Council of PTAs. The PTA council is very proud to be hosting this event in conjunction with the Mill Valley Teachers Association represented this evening by Presidents Kim Curley and Erin Conklin, and also in conjunction with the California State Employees Association, the CSEA, the president of which is Karen Manini who is unable to attend this evening. Before we begin, I'd like to thank Leslie Thornton, Principal of Strawberry Point School for offering to let us host the event here. In addition, I'd like to thank Tim Ryan, Director of Maintenance for the District, and Kathy Somerville, who is the PTA President for Strawberry Point. I'm also deeply grateful to Tim Amex, who is right back here videotaping the evening's forum for us. Thank you, Tim. And finally, I'd like to extend my thanks to the League of Women Voters of Marin, and especially to Ann Laser, who was so patient with my many questions about organizing this event. Please allow me to introduce Judy Vinsaka, who is sitting to my left, from the League of Women's Voters, who will act as the moderator for tonight's forum. Judy will also explain the format of the evening following this introduction. Finally, I'd like to extend a very warm welcome to our three candidates. Two of these candidates will be replacing the outgoing school board members Judy Sherman and Janet Miller. And thank you very much to those two volunteers. You're getting right there. Thank you very much for all of your commitment to the district. Let me introduce our three candidates, to my left and to your right, in alphabetical order. Robert, Bob Jacobs. Thank you. Leslie Wachtel. And now I'll turn the microphone over to Judy. Again, if you have a question, please raise your hand, and one of our volunteers will pass you a card and a pencil, and we'll collect them to hand to our moderator.
Okay, this should work alright. Well, thank you for that introduction, Mari. And I also want to introduce Sandy Smith, who will be our timekeeper tonight. She has the cards with the number of minutes left for our candidates to finish their statements, so she's very important to keep her eye on. Well, as you already know, we have three candidates running tonight. Bob Jacobs, Leslie Wachtel, and Clifford Waldeck. They will make opening statements of two minutes each, and we'll start with Bob Jacobs.
Two minutes of three.
We set it up to three, up to three.
Oh, okay. Right down to three minutes each. Three minutes each, Bob.
One of the characteristics of a successful school district is parental involvement, and I would like to thank the parents and teachers for attending this forum tonight. It does not surprise me, but still impressive and appreciated. My name is Bob Jacobs, I'm running for Mill Valley School Board. I would like to discuss my qualifications for this position. I taught 21 years as a high school biology, physiology, and environmental problems teacher, and 21 years as a middle school life science teacher. From 1991 until 2010, I taught seventh grade life science at Mill Valley Middle School until my retirement in June 2010. I have more firsthand experience in matters that affect the education of students than any other candidate. I was a negotiator for the Mill Valley Teachers Association from 2001 to 2010. As a result, I am familiar with the issues that affect the school district, including financial issues. I have always opened my classroom to students before school, during recess, during lunch, after school. In addition, I took students on a Washington, New York trip for 11 years. I took students to Europe for five years, and I even included China for one year. The point is that I will be a very energetic and visible school board member. I will visit and become familiar with the elementary schools. You will see me at many school events. I have a proven record of being willing and able to communicate effectively with a wide variety of groups, including students, parents, and teachers. I will not shy away from any issue. The community will never have to wonder what my position is on a topic. Mill Valley is an exceptional school district. While parents and teachers should not take test scores as the only indicator of success, our test scores are well within the top 10 percent in the state. The arts and technology programs are outstanding thanks to Kido and the PTSA. The atmosphere of the schools is safe for students and conducive for learning. The students are happy to be in school and are enthusiastic. All the elementary schools have or will have extensive renovations. Teachers want to come here because of the desirable conditions. There's an influx of parents with young children moving to Mill Valley. That being said, there are serious challenges facing every school district in California, including Mill Valley, and those challenges revolve around money. When I first started teaching in 1991, the middle school had about 600 students. Last week, the number was 878 and counting. The projection is to exceed 1,000 students in a few years. While these numbers are rising, increased funding for all these students is not. This is the nature of a basic aid district, which depends upon property taxes for its main source of revenue. One of the effects of decreased funding this year has been increased class size. Tonight, I'd like to discuss this issue, as well as other issues such as parcel taxes, bond proposals, mentoring new teachers, communication issues, ensuring that the outstanding music chorus, art, drama, and technology programs are maintained. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Leslie Wachtel, and I am honored to be running for the Mill Valley School Board. I am a longstanding advocate for parents, teachers, our schools, and most importantly, our children. Great to see so many familiar faces of parents and teachers in the audience tonight. As a parent of four great kids who attended Mill Valley Public Schools, a Kido Board Member and a Kido Chair, a PTA President at Old Mill in Tam High, and a nonstop school volunteer, I have worked over the last past 20 years to help build the excellent public schools we have today. There is no doubt that our schools are facing a tremendous financial challenge. With growing enrollment and decreasing revenues, we are going to have to make tough but smart choices over the next few years to weather this storm. So why am I the person to help the Mill Valley School District make it through the challenges that we are facing? Because in 20 years of volunteer leadership in Mill Valley schools, I have had one overriding philosophy, whether it was in my leadership roles in Kido, in PTA, or on the district's first strategic planning task force, and that philosophy is collaboration. Mill Valley is a small town with tremendous resources and wonderful people who want to be part of the solution. I have yet to encounter a problem or a challenging situation that we have not been able to meet simply by getting all the parties around a table and collaborating on a solution that involves all of us working together for the children. Over the past 20 years, I have seen what this town can accomplish when we work together. I was the board chair of Kido when drastic mid-year cuts came down from the state, and we had to go back to our community in a challenge campaign. We managed to double our fundraising for the year and save critical programs. That is the kind of collaboration I stand for. As Old Mill PTA President and President of the PTA Council, I've worked with our teachers and staff to help identify their most pressing needs and how the parents could best support our teachers in their classrooms. That is the kind of collaboration I stand for. As a longtime Mill Valley resident and school volunteer, I want to ensure that the Mill Valley School District continues to communicate with our neighbors and community members whenever changes or events might impact them. That is the kind of collaboration I stand for. If elected to the school board, my priorities will be clear: provide an excellent and well-balanced education that prepares our students for future success, attract and retain great teachers, maintain safe schools and environments for our children, promote innovation, excellence, and accountability. I believe that we must keep these priorities in the forefront as we look at ways to balance our budget and prepare for the future. I believe that my 20 years of experience give me a unique perspective and a deep understanding of the issues. Thank you, and I look forward to your questions.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me? Okay, good. Good evening. My name is Clifford Waldeck, and I'm running for the Mill Valley School Board, Board of Trustees. I'd like to first start off by thanking the Council of PTAs, the Mill Valley Teachers Association, and California School Employees Association for giving me the opportunity to speak with all of you, and especially, and of course, a special hello to my wife, Karen, my daughter, Carlie, and my wonderful Inna Laws, who have been the rock of Carlie's six years, Peter and Vivian here. Thank you. So, why should I be the newest addition to our school board? Let me lay it out for you. I'm a parent of a first grader at Park School, a Park School alum, and someone who cares deeply about the future of our school district. Mine is a holistic commitment to our current and future students, teachers, administrators, buildings, and grounds. I understand the various pressures: enrollment projections, budget constraints, aging buildings, parcel taxes, bond measures, design and construction issues. To the role of a trustee, I will bring the objectivity and skills of a lifelong resident, respected business owner, elected and appointed government leader, with the passion of a parent whose child will be directly impacted by the challenges we face. No doubt about it, the challenges before us are a complex set of concerns, issues, and stakeholders. If elected, I will bring broad board experience working with complex stakeholder groups to achieve the best possible outcome. I have developed skills early on as Tam High Student Body President in 1976, and honed those skills as a business owner, the eight years on the Mill Valley's Eddie Council, and serving as board members with organizations as diverse as the Mountain Place, Sengers Marin, Mill Valley Fall Arts Festival, state regulatory agencies such as our Regional Water Board, and the Bay Conservation Development Commission. As a trustee, considering the challenges before the district, I'll make every effort to develop ideas and solutions that balance the following priorities: people, by that I mean the kids, teachers, administrator, and community at large; environment, as in our facilities, grounds, safe routes to school, current and future design and construction projects, and again, our community, and fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
And now we're ready for the questions. If you haven't turned in your questions yet, please give them to the ushers, there's still time to do that. The candidates will have two minutes to answer the questions, and the first one to answer will be Leslie. We have a number of questions here about the financial situation of the school district. So I'll just try and edit all these, and it's basically, what is your plan for solving the budget shortfall and ensuring adequate funding?
That is a large thing to put on my plate. We are obviously going to face some financial challenges in the next few years. We're a basic aid district, and our finances, state finances, are shrinking, and we are going to all need to come together. We are all going to need to collaborate. All the stakeholders are going to need to be in the same room at the same time, and everything is going to need to be on the table. There are certain drivers in this community that decide how our schools are funded. We have parcel tax, we have Kido, we have other local funding. Fifty-three percent of our budget comes from our secured property taxes, 23 percent from our parcel taxes, 8 percent from Kido, 8 percent from other local funding. So obviously, as our property taxes have, years ago, they were at 4, 5, 6 percent, and now they are flat, we are going to need to find other ways to fund our exceptional public schools. And the only way that we can do that is to work together, and that is what I have done for the last 20 years in this district, is to collaborated and worked on finding solutions to keep our schools as good as they are right now. So I certainly don't have an easy fix. I think we are going to have to look at everything, from parcel tax to property tax, to parent contributions, to everything on the table that goes into our budget.
Clifford?
Yes, that is the big issue facing the problem here now, and I was joking with the superintendent beforehand, I was saying I'm going to answer every question with, I will work with the superintendent towards it. So, no, it's a real serious matter. For such a long time, the state budget was kind of an ethereal something out of there that I thought about in my political wonk mind. But now the state budget is quite real, and we're going to have shortfalls coming forward here. And what's most important is that everybody involved, have all the stakeholders at the table, and have transparency in our processes going forward. I'm so glad that this meeting here is being taped, because I believe that we should have our school board meetings, webcasts as well. And thank you Mayor Wachtel for taking that to the finish line there. But again, I mean, property values are not going up, and people are worried about their jobs, so we have to be mindful of that going forward, and have kind of a strategic cheerleader for the pom-poms to get all the community involved in the decisions of what's going on, and how we all work together to make our schools even better going into the future, even though we're faced with fewer resources.
The first step will have to be meetings like this with the community. The community has to get educated as to what the financial situation is. I know that people are saying that this is the worst crisis in the history of California education, and these are people that have been around and have been in negotiations in the past, and they are just cannot believe what's happening. So there is going to have to be a restructuring in California of how schools are financed. Now, that's something that's beyond our control here, but what's been said by my colleagues here is exactly right. We're going to have to sit down, we're going to have to talk about things like parcel taxes. Will this community accept another parcel tax? I don't know that this community will accept another parcel tax, but the question is, what does this community want to do with their schools? What sort of quality does this community want to have in their schools? And if they want the high level of quality that they've had through the years, then they're going to have to pay for it, because the money is just not going to come in. As a teacher, for example, the big issue this year is class size, and class size was never an issue. I taught for 19 years at Mill Valley Middle School, and I never had more than 115 students total until two years ago, two years before I retired. I then had, my next-to-last year, I had 120 students, which was an average of 24 students in a classroom. My last year, I had 130 students, which was by far the most I ever had, which averaged 26 per class. This year, the average in science classrooms is 28. That's, in my own personal opinion, as a teacher, beyond the point of no return. That's when standards start to decrease. That's when programs are effective. So contributions, parcel tax, these are some of the issues that we're going to have to educate the community with.
Okay, well, that leads us into a next question. We got a number of questions around this subject of class size. Cliff will be the first one to answer this question. What impact do you think larger class sizes will have on teaching and learning in the district?
To be clear, I haven't been a teacher, so I don't know the numbers quite as well as others might have, or what our staff have. That said, I know at Park School, we have a problem. We have three kindergarten classes, that's 25, that are supposed to go into a fourth and fifth grade class of only two classes. So class size is key. When I've talked with my friends that are educators, from our high school friend Dan Horowitz to the teachers at Park School, it's exponential after 24 or 25. And I'm glad to see that the proactive approach that's being taken about improving and expanding the capacities in our schools, and also looking towards the plan of expanding the capacity of Ed McQuire's, well, too. But hey, I work in Oakland, and I talk to the parents of the schools in Oakland, and you know, they'd be very fortunate to have our problems. That said, we've had a standard here for a long time of smaller class sizes and excellence in our schools. So again, it's about reaching out to the 85 percent of the people in 94941 that don't have kids at the school, get them on board with what the schools are doing. So if we can pass the parcel taxes, get our businesses to contribute to Kido, and work collaboratively with the community as a whole.
First of all, we should not compare ourselves with other school districts.
We should not say, for example, I talked to a parent recently whose children are in the Nevada schools, and they have a class size of 32 or 33, and we are, let's just say, a 28. So it would be very easy to conclude, well, you know, we're a 28, they're a 32, so we're still doing okay. That type of thinking will not work. That type of thinking is not going to improve education in the Mill Valley schools. Let me just give a couple of examples. Science and English. And this is controversial, but what happens when the class size gets too large? Is it business as usual? And from my experience, it is not business as usual, when the class sizes, even from dedicated teachers. I will use, for example, in science labs, which I taught through the years. Many of those labs would not be nearly as effective once the number gets beyond a certain level, for example, 28, unless every student in that class is highly motivated, which is a rarity. So you're going to have to give a lot of your attention to other students in the class that need help, and when those numbers get up there, what a teacher might eventually do is just not do that lab this year. Might, I mean, this is what happens, they might back off and say, well, too many students. I'll do some labs, but I'm not going to do others. And slowly but surely, the program changes. What does an English teacher do when they have, for example, they have, for example, 100 students, and then all of a sudden it goes up to 125 essays to grade? It gets very difficult, and maybe what they will do, and these are dedicated teachers, they might just have to eliminate an essay or two, because it's just too exhausting through time. And I have seen this, I'm not projecting this, I have seen this happen with teachers. And so this is what my concern is with class size.
Leslie?
I've been a parent for 25 years, I'm a parent in the district for close to 20 years, and I think we would all agree that we would like to see small class sizes. It's just what works for children. It's easier to teach less children rather than more children. However, my priority on the school board would be to attract and retain great teachers, and to give them the support in the classroom that they need for the number of students that they would need to have as an increasing enrollment. Our enrollment has gone up to about 100 students every year for the past few years, and they predict that is going to continue. So I think we have to assume that over the next few years, class sizes are going to go up with the support of Kido, who helps support classroom aides, and with the help of PTAs, who help support our teachers with supply, and parent volunteers. I think we need to all work together so that those numbers are manageable, that we keep the cuts as far away from the classroom and the teachers as possible. But I just see that with the growing enrollment that we have, that our class sizes are going to go up, and the best way is for us to support our staff as best we can so that they can work with the number of students that they're going to have within their classrooms. It's going to take a community effort, and it may be parcel taxes, it may be more community contributions, but I think the best thing to do is to attract and retain amazing teachers, which all of my children have in this district.
Okay, the next question will be answered first by Bob, and the question is, what do you see as the most pressing educational problem in our district?
As a teacher, I did not see any pressing educational problems. I think that things were quite good in the school. I'm just speaking from the middle school right now, and I really do not know what's going on in the elementary schools, and still don't, and that's going to be part of my education. But I'm not going to ask that question, because I felt that Mill Valley Middle School had excellent teaching, and the only thing that I would suggest is that some students were getting lost, but we certainly, very few students, some students were not successful at that middle school, but very few, and we worked with those students, and we tried to work individually with those students, and in some cases it worked, in some cases it did not work. But overall, when a student graduated from Mill Valley Middle School, they were one happy student, and they were definitely prepared for the next level, and there were very few exceptions to that. So I think that we were accomplishing our purpose right through the years from K through A, we were doing our job, and still, we still are doing our job. So that's as far as I go. I don't see any pressing issues.
Leslie?
I would agree. I think our schools are amazing, I think our teachers are amazing. I think perhaps that one thing that I would say, and it might relate back to the last question, is that I think our challenges going forward are going to be, as class sizes do increase, helping our teachers who are going to have to have more students with perhaps more differentiated learning issues, from the students who are going to need remedial help, who are going to need to be helped along the way, and then the high-end achieving students. And I think as there are more students in the classroom, that is going to be a harder and harder thing to do, and we're really going to need to work together to support our teachers so that that is less of a problem for them, and we can support them. And then I think there's some educational problems that we may not even know exist yet. I think technology is something in this 2011 that educational technology is just coming into the forefront, more and more things are happening, iPads, Eye Touch, and I think there may be issues coming forward that we don't even know exist yet, that is going to be something this district is going to have to address. But other than that, I think my children started out in this district, and it began their lifelong love of learning. They met teachers who would turn them into the amazing students and the great citizens that they are, and I think... that they are, and I think all in all, we live in an exceptional place with exceptional schools, exceptional teachers, and a wonderful parent community.
Clifford.
I stay up at night worrying about education going forward. It is such a moving target with our kids. Look at technology. I mean, I was told that there's 800 school districts that have turned in their books, turned them in for iPads. So kids have carried books that carry iPads. Technology now is at a point where we're not sure exactly what we want to embrace, what we don't want to embrace, and it's critical at this point now because we're, we're doing our bonds and doing our future planning for Ed and McGuire and the middle school, and we better have it down what we want to have for our technology. And, and, and so that's something that I'm glad it went great in the, the past, but I'm looking for, forward. And plus, you know, the planning. I'd like to see our curriculum campuses and just to continue to develop eco-consciousness as we instill a love of lifelong learning, good, good character and sustainable habits about our next iteration. I'm passionate about sustainability. As a business owner, I was committed to saving green by going green. The first business to receive the Green Business of the Month Award from the San Francisco Department of the Environment, and in 1900, in 2009, I was recognized as a green entrepreneur with a Cool California Small Business Excellence Award. As a founding member of the Business Council on Climate Change, I have long committed to the triple bottom line of people, planet, and fiscal responsibility, a way of thinking about solutions that I know will benefit our school district.
Okay, Leslie will be the first one to answer the next question. I try and edit these questions, again, they relate to the budget, so I hope this isn't too overwhelming. Will you commit tonight to put everything on the table for discussion and potential cuts as you meet your fiduciary duties in the, in the face of $1 to $2 million deficits? And do you think budget cuts should be made by the school board, superintendent, or the board and superintendent, or teachers, classified staff, and administrators, and the school board working together? So who should make the budget cuts, basically? And are you willing to put everything on the table to discuss those?
I, I think as a community, we must put everything on the table to, to discuss these. And I would think that this has to be a discussion that we all have to sit around at a table and collaborate and discuss. I don't think that it can be done by any one segment of this population or any one group of stakeholders. There is too much invested in our schools, in our teachers, in our children. We all need to, to be part of the solution, and we need to sit down and look at every piece of the budget, but we need to do that together, not separately, in a, in meetings, going out to the community. I think it is a shared responsibility of everyone, not only in this room, but in our Mill Valley community in general. And again, my priorities would be to, you know, provide the excellent education for our students and to make sure that they have success in our, in their future.
Clifford.
Serving on the city council for eight years, we, we had to look at budgets and make tough decisions going forward. And I'll tell you what I pledge right now, if, that I will not get ahead of the process. Because there's a process that is in place amongst the teachers, the superintendent, the staff, and the community, and I will not be the grand standard, you know, says we can't cut this, we can't cut that, leaving it to everybody else to kind of like do, do the nasty work while, you know, I, you know, I get to be the cool guy to, you know, saying yes to everybody. So we have a new superintendent, a new superintendent here, that I think that when I talk to the board members that are on the board now, that person has faced these issues in the past. I've been trying to dig up anything bad that has been said about the superintendent coming in, haven't found anything. So let's, so let's let the current board, who made their pick of superintendent, whose eyes are wide open coming into this, guide us along the way.
Bob.
I agree, we must begin this discussion right now, this year. We must include all groups in the discussion. And I'd like to just add something from another question. Parcel tax was mentioned, contributions was mentioned, but there's another issue, and I'm not sure if this is a question, so I'm going to bring it up now as an issue, as a controversial issue, is that we have a surplus in the budget. And the question is, how much of that surplus can we responsibly have? Now, I don't know what the surplus plus is right now, I've been, I mean, negotiations haven't started in this district yet, but I'm going to assume, I have heard that the surplus, for example, right now is 15% with a, with a goal of 16%. The question I would ask when we begin this discussion is, is that necessary, especially when the state of California for a basic aid district recommends between 3 and 9%, I believe, as a surplus for a basic aid district? So we have to look at the funds, we have to decide what's important to us, and we have to decide as a group, so that all parties are going to be relatively satisfied with this, this very painful decision.
Okay, Clifford will be the first to answer the next question. In your opinion, what is the greatest strength of the Mill Valley School District, and what is the greatest challenge?
The greatest strength of the school district is the community and the people that are involved with the schools, and the greatest challenge is to get the people that aren't involved with the schools to be more involved with the schools and vote in favor of our bonds and parcel taxes. I also think one of the incredible strengths we have, and I see it with, with both Mr. Jacobs and Ms. Wachtel talking about, is the continuity of excellence that we've had here in the schools. I'm, you know, I'm proud to say, one of my favorite supporters is my fourth grade teacher from Park School, Shirley Hasley, who was like the first African-American teacher to come to Mill Valley, and we kept the friendship going on since. I'm still in touch with my fifth grade teacher, Mr. Provos, and, and that's what the strength is, because I think people come to Mill Valley to live in Mill Valley, to have a Mayberry Village type of life, not with big gates in front of their homes, but building that strength of continuity. And I think the big challenge is, is getting the new people that come to town, because when I came to town, it was the same thing. My parents lived in San Francisco, and they built the Geneva Towers, and they came to Mill Valley. So the, what I will bring to the school board is getting those new people that come to town, who love it here, who want to get involved, get them involved. And, and I know Mr. Jacobs and Ms. Wachtel have been doing that for years and years, and I hope I've been doing that too.
Bob.
I've always said this, the greatest strength is the students. The students are absolutely remarkable. They're a highly motivated group, and that they are what makes this school district very special. But of course, I can't leave out the teachers, who do a fantastic job also. So the combination of a highly, a group of highly motivated students with excellent teachers is what makes this district special. I would also like to throw in KIDO. KIDO is something that is, I think about all the time. What would this, and I'll say this again, what would this district be like without KIDO? What sort of programs would we have here without KIDO? What sort of enthusiasm would the students have without KIDO? The programs that KIDO supports is really what many, many students, regardless of what their grades are, like the most about this district, whether it be the chorus, the drama program, things like this is what they love.
Leslie.
Well, I think the strength of this district is out in the audience. The fact that it's a Monday night, we've assembled here to talk about a school board election. We have lots of staff members here, we have parents here, we have past parents here, we have parents from the high school, and we've all come together to elect a couple people who are going to help preserve the greatness of our schools. So I think definitely our greatest strength are our people. That's our parents, our teachers, our administration, the current school board, all the past school boards, and we also have, KIDO certainly is a big part of this district as well, our KIDO, our PTAs, all of the community volunteers who come together each and every year to both donate their time, they donate their, their finances to make this a great school. I, I really do feel that our children are special, our parents are special, our whole community is a, is a special place to, to be. As far as our greatest challenge, I think we really, right now, we have to look at the fact that our greatest challenge is probably a financial challenge for the years ahead, and only through collaboration and fairness and coming together to look at the issues, are we going to be able to get through this particular challenge for the next couple of years.
Okay, Bob will be the one to answer the next question first, and that question is, now that our technology infrastructure is in place, what is your vision for technology in the district?
I was considered the most technologically challenged teacher in the world. I would like to say that I'm very proud, and after retiring, I now have 1,300 former students on Facebook. I was the least likely of all the candidates, of all the teachers, of all the parents to be doing this. I actually sub for technology class last year. I could, I could not stay away from education, that's why I'm running the school board, I just have not had enough yet. And so I became a sub last year, and Linda's here, and I, I can't believe the technology teacher, and I can't believe that she was brave enough to have me go into her class, and, and I will never understand why. But I have never been, I have never been in a class like this, and it happened the first day. The students walked in to the class, most of them didn't say hello, they just walked in, they got their earphones, they sat down on their machines, I don't know, computers, excuse me, and they, and they started to, they started to work. And I had to stop them, which they didn't like, to give them the assignment. Technology is extremely popular, and I've lost a little bit of track of the, of the question, but that's okay. I have some things to say about technology, because kids absolutely love the class. Now, the, the big question is, how valuable is it going to be in their education? And there are studies being done as to the value of technology in middle school and high school. Obviously, the jobs are there, students have to know about technology, they have to be proficient in technology, and the program will, the program will continue, and I guess I'll stop right there.
Leslie.
Well, I would like to, to refer to something that Mary Jane Burke said when I asked her about technology. Mary Jane is the Marin County Superintendent of Schools, and she said, technology is a tool. It is really a tool that our students use. It doesn't replace amazing teachers, it's something that amazing teachers learn, use to deliver curriculum. And there's a lot of great things going on. At the high school, there's a math teacher who has all these screens around the room, flat panel TVs, and he says that basically that his generation of high school students will watch anything on a screen. They will learn anything on a screen. They're sorry, they will, they just, they love technology. And I think technology is something that is really evolving. At the high school, we also have something that I'm sure could be used at the, at the K through eights as well, something called Flip Learning, where teachers have iPads in their classroom, and the students actually go home and look at the lessons online at home, and then when they come into school, they, they do the labs at school, and they get the teacher's help at school. So I see lots of different places, as my kids have grown up, where technology is a great tool. Another thing that I think many districts are looking at, and I know Clifford mentioned this already, is that you can get iPads for students, and that you can load all of their textbooks onto iPads, which is a tremendous savings down the line. So that is certainly something in a time of financial challenges that we might all want to look at. So that's what I would say about technology. I think it is a tool for the future.
I agree with what Ms. Wachtel said about, technology is just a tool. And as a parent of a first grader, I'm not, I'm not too eager to really embrace technology at this point, at the nth degree at all. I kind of leave that to the teachers, the administrators, and, and staff to figure out the best tool. In fact, I kind of fight technology now. I mean, I'd much rather have my daughter sit down and read a book than watch an educational television show. So technology is something, it's kind of, it's, it's a productive thing, and we have to figure out, you know, what we want to use, what we don't want to use, and what best fits what our teachers and administrators want to have in the school. We should never take a technology and say, this is a great technology, how are we going to use it? No, we figure out what, what we want to achieve and figure out how technology can get us to that point in a more cost-effective, time-effective manner, and also penetration in that child's minds as well.
Okay, Leslie will be the first to answer the next question. Looks like we're back to the budget again. It's going to be a rather popular subject, but this is from a little different angle. How do you think the district budget should be developed? And then how will you work to ensure that it's transparent to all the stakeholders and employee groups?
Well, having not been on the board as yet, I'm not sure that I have those answers totally in hand. I think as far as transparency goes, I think that our CFAC, Community Financial Action Committee, has done a great job of putting out documents that really do show transparency in the district. So I would applaud all the people who have sat on CFAC. CFAC kind of came into being when I was the chair of KIDO about 10 years ago, so I've been watching their progress over all of those years. So I think we need to continue to have transparency, that the community needs to be able to see the budgets, our staff needs to see the budgets, our parents need to see the budgets, but I really can't address too much more until I'm actually on the school board, so I think that would be the answer. But my priorities certainly would be to, what is my husband doing?
Sleeping.
Sorry, that was distracting. But I, I would still stick to my priorities, and I think that, I think that financially we all need to be able to see what's happening in the district and to have knowledge of what's happening in the district.
Clifford.
My wife Karen said, Cliff, would you get up? My wife Karen said, "Cliff, when you get up there, don't talk about webcasting." They don't care that much about webcasting. But I got to tell you, you know, when, when we talk about the budget and being open and everything else, we're filming this meeting here. Now, when I was at the Fall Arts Festival over the weekend, I was talking to the city clerk in Mill Valley, who happened to be there, I said, "Well, how much would it cost us to, if we wanted to webcast the school board meetings from City Hall?" Well, we're thinking about charging rent, and it's probably about $100 or $150 for the actual tech, the technical person to do the filming. And I just know that if we have it for the schools, that no parent will have to make the choice between spending time with their child, helping them with their homework, and knowing what's going on in their schools. And one of the other things I've noticed when I've been at the school board meetings is that we need to have a packet, a full packet of information that's available to the public that's in a binder on the side. I don't see that there now. And maybe I went to too many rock concerts as a kid, but I'd like to have amplification there as well. Just because I can't hear that well in the back, and it's not because I'm talking during the meeting. But, but, but again, it all ties into like, my overall gestalt of bringing the school board closer and more accessible to the community.
What is important to parents will reflect how the budget is approached. What is important to teachers will reflect how the budget is approached. There has, there has to be, or should be, certainly input from both sides. I do have a complaint about the budget, though, and how it's approached, right? How it has been approached in the past. What has happened in Mill Valley, and it doesn't happen everywhere, is that a budget is set up by the board, and all the programs that are desired are put in place with a cost attached to it. And then what happens is whatever's left over is what the teachers are going to get, or what the teachers have to negotiate for. I don't like that approach. I think that everything should be equal at the beginning. In other words, what is more important, programs or teachers? And the board has taken the position, I don't know if they took this position last year, but they have taken the position continuously when I was on negotiations, of programs first, teachers second. So it perhaps should be input from parents, input from teachers. Let's take a look at this budget, and let's be fair to all sides.
First to answer the next question will be Clifford. And it looks like we have a number of questions related to collaboration. Can you talk about how you will collaborate with the board, the administration, the staff, the parents, and the community?
I, yes, to all of the above. I pride myself on collaborative skills. I mean, I love getting people together. I love, you know, being able to introduce two people that can help each other out, and, and, you know, help people find jobs, you know, help, you know, set up people on dates. And, and then now, I mean, this whole new world of, you know, getting playdates for your kid, it's like the dating scene all over again. I can, little Susie have a playdate with my daughter, and they didn't return my phone call, I can't believe that. You know, so I, I have a long history of effective cooperation. When I, of just having the opportunity of, let's say, working, being on this city council, and we developed the plans, and led the funding, and built the community center. And I won't name them, but the people who paid for the slide are in the room here. So, again, I find, I think people that, my supporters will let you know that I'm very accessible by email and cellphone, and probably, you know, I can annoy people, I might call people a little bit too much, but I'm in sales, I can't help it, you know. So it's like, if someone doesn't, you know, is there something that's important to the schools, and a person doesn't return my call or my email, I'll return the call, you know, I'll, you know, I'll keep calling until I'm given the stop sign. So thank you.
I'd like to just take a look at Edna McGuire as an example of collaboration. I'm not really familiar with the issue beyond what I've read in the newspaper, but something obviously broke down there in communication. I don't know whether it was anybody's fault or whose fault it was, but there was a bond issue that passed. And then there were meetings, I assume, regarding this new school. And then the decision was made. And then after the decision, there seemed to still be a lot of conflict. Did, so my question would be this, did the conflict begin before the decision was made or after the decision was made? In other words, collaboration, what you try to do is you try to get all the information on the table. You try to, to reach all groups that are involved in making decisions. And then after you've made a decision, well, that's it, most of the time. And so, I have a really nice history, I believe, of communicating with parents, with students, with teachers. I believe that you have to take a lot of time sometimes to kind of handle an issue. And we have talked about issues tonight where a lot of time will be needed. And then hopefully, we can, everybody will at least understand that the decision that has been made. I don't know that that happened at Edna McGuire. So we can use an example, my point here is that we can use an example where there was not success, and see how we can become more successful in the future.
Leslie.
Well, I think collaboration is honestly one of my best skills. I'm a talker, and I think I'd like nothing better than to hear what people have to say, to get them in a room and find out what's happening. When I was at Old Mill, Lisa Capretta and I were PTA presidents, and we discovered that there wasn't a lot of communication going on among the parents, even just to the PTA. So we started something called the Coffee Card, which now I see from the newsletters I get from all the other schools, is now something that happens in almost every school. And that was a real first step to having people not only just communicate with us, but then the staff came out and talked to everyone. And it was a great way for people just to start talking. And I think that's where we have to start right now, is to have everybody start talking to each other about what's important to them, what's important for their staff, what's important for the parents, and what's important for the children. I also was part of something many years ago, when John Harder was Superintendent of the District, called District Round Tables. And this was something that he had kind of put together. And it was a place where superintendent met with PTA leaders, he met with the Kido leaders, staff was included, and it was, it went away after John left. But it was such an exceptional group of people who came together and talked about what was going on in the district. And I think that I would like to have a place again for that to happen in this district, where we can all communicate together, staff to parents, parents to administration, all together. So that would be my hope, because I think only through, you know, collaboration, fairness, and a thorough understanding of the issues, are we going to be able to preserve our excellent public schools.
We now have a series of questions directed to individuals specifically. So I will ask the person involved first, and then the other two candidates will have time to make any other comments they want. So this question is directed at Bob. Actually, they're two different ones, but they're basically on the same issue. You ought to launch successful careers as a well-respected teacher, and during that time, you've also been negotiating with the teachers. How will you handle the inevitable conflict between teacher requests from former colleagues and the obligations of the board to stick to a budget and look out for the best interest of the students? And that's basically what the second question was, too. How are you going to deal with the teachers that you're used to having?
I think there's an advantage here. And one of the things that doesn't happen sometimes is that the board does not reach out to teachers. And I certainly plan to reach out to teachers. Regardless of what the issue is, everybody should have some input. And a huge percentage of the budget has to do with salaries, it has to do with benefits. And so, as a board member, to me, I see it as a plus that I will have access to teachers and teachers' feelings. Will I always vote on the side of teachers? Not necessarily. There's no guarantee whatsoever that I would do that. I think that I understand the fact that I'm a retired teacher now, that I'm running for school board, and that there is a possibility in the future that I would make a decision that might not be favorable to teachers. And I certainly would not have any fear of doing that whatsoever. But on the other hand, I was a teacher, I'm going to still, I get feedback from teachers whenever necessary. And I think that that will only benefit communication in Mill Valley. And I think that will also perhaps have a happier ending when things like negotiations are over.
Leslie, you want to comment? Okay. Clifford, do you want to comment?
Yeah, you know, part of what I bring to the table here is a fresh set of eyes. And I don't really have experience negotiating with teachers and teacher contracts at all. And that's a good thing, because I don't have this history of what went right beforehand and what didn't go right beforehand, because we're in the here and now, and we're looking forward. And I'm going to be around teachers, because my daughter's going to be part of this system for the next six or seven years. And again, going back to what I said before about negotiations, it's a delicate balance. I don't want to get ahead of anything in the negotiations. I've talked to the teachers. And there might be a new way of figuring out how we can do things better than we were doing it before, when the teachers and the, and the school board and the superintendent administration all had that together there. And also, I want to bring up a point about Edna McGuire, because that's a negotiation, too. And I got to tell you, our schools are, the schools like Old Mill and Tan Valley, everything that has gone well, most of the stuff has gone well, is because of community input coming into those, to those, to those schools. Did somebody sue? Yeah, who would prefer that people didn't sue? Yeah, but you know, it's not a perfect world, and this is America where people can sue. So hopefully, with the Edna McGuire situation, we can kind of learn a couple of lessons from that. And I don't know what the lessons are, but when the same type of situation comes up again, we'll be a little bit smarter, or have a little bit more information to see if we can make it so people don't sue, but you can't ever stop people from doing it.
Okay, this next question is specifically for Leslie. You've been involved in our local schools almost 20 years in many capacities. What is the most important thing you've learned from this work that will serve you as a trustee?
I think the most important thing I've learned is that we get nowhere unless we work together. I think collaboration is what it's all about, it's what's going to guide us through the next few years. From the time my children were in kindergarten, my son just now has 25. I don't think that stops, by the way, on a school, just on school boards. I think that is the same for any board you're ever on, any, any group that you're ever in as an adult. I think teaching collaborative skills is very, very important. I don't, I, I would think that's probably the most important thing I've learned. I've had to work with, you know, six principals, thousands of parents in my leadership roles in Kido and PTA. And I think maybe, maybe in addition to collaboration, the other thing I would say is being a really good listener. And I think that's something that I am. I am a very good listener, and I am anxious to have the opportunity to be on the school board and to listen to everyone's points of view.
Clifford, do you want to comment?
I think Ashley just said exactly everything that I wanted to just say, and I second that emotion. Let's move the question forward.
Bob, any comment?
Briefly, what I've learned as a teacher is that the most important thing is that students have a love for learning, and students are excited about their education, and that students become highly motivated in classes.
Okay, this question is directed specifically at Clifford. You've been involved in civic affairs for many years. What have you done or are you doing to prepare to be an effective trustee from the very first meeting?
I'm having so much fun. You know, I, you know, the way in which this process goes, the fighting for the, for, for the race is in the summer, when everybody's gone. The campaign is basically when school starts. And so, there isn't that much time to get yourself up to speed, but, you know, I've met, I feel like this is like my trip to Italy, and my learning course has been my Italian version class. Because I've met with the superintendent, I've gone to the meetings about the Park School in Euromed, I've met with the, with the teacher and classified staff representatives. I've been to a few school board meetings. I've been kind of like stalking and hounding the current school board, asking a lot of questions, kind of like Bieber, Cleaver, Wally, you know. And, and so, I'm pretty comfortable now that, that I have a pretty good understanding of what's going on, especially in the whole world of revenue-based schools versus basic aid schools, and how in the olden days, you want to have everybody in the community, every kid in the community go into the schools. Now, when you're a basic aid, it's like based upon property taxes, so having more students there doesn't quite work that well. So I've been learning quite a bit, and it just got me more and more turned on to be on the school board, and especially to, I, too, so, so thank you all for doing this here.
Okay, Bob will be the first one to answer the next question. What is your understanding of the collective bargaining process? And what do you view as the role of school board members in that process?
Well, first of all, school board members are the ones that are the leaders. They're the ones that are going to approve of the contract ultimately, along with teachers. So that's what their role is. The collective bargaining process is, is a process by which we try to establish a budget. We also try to, to figure out things like what teachers are going to get paid next year, whether the benefit's going to be, what are the other issues? There's a series of issues that we sit down with, we discuss, and we try to reach an agreement. There are two sides in the collective bargaining process. There are teachers, and there's also staff, that's a different collective bargaining process. And then there is the, then there's the superintendent, usually in Mill Valley at least, does not play a very important role. There's a lawyer for the, for the administration, and there's constant consultation. There's a lawyer for the, for the administration, and there's constant consultations with the school board. And I'm not sure what happens in those consultations, but, but the school board seems to, at least in Mill Valley, direct what's going to happen from their side. And, you know, that's pretty much what it is, is just two sides getting together, trying to work out some problems, and coming to, coming to an agreement.
Leslie?
Would you have another question?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, no, no, this is now a question for everybody.
Oh.
No.
Can you repeat the question?
Okay, sure. No, 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 we finished your questions. This is now a question for you.
All right.
Okay. What is your understanding of the collective bargaining process? And what do you view is the role of school board members in that process?
Well, I can tell you what I have learned while campaigning, what the process is, and it's pretty much what Bob described, that the school board is essentially the teachers, the CTA, I believe California Teachers Association, and the classified, which is a different group, get together. And they, in our district, there is an attorney who represents the district. And the superintendent, I believe, is somewhat involved, and the chief financial officer for the district as well. And they've worked together in a bargaining process, and then the result of that is brought back to the board, and the board ultimately votes on that process. Having never done this before, I'm sure that there are many things I'm going to learn about collective bargaining that I don't know right now. But I'm sure I will learn what they are if you elect me and vote for me on November eighth, and I will look forward to doing that. Can I make one more comment?
You have time.
Okay, good. I want to second something that Clifford said a while ago, and that is that we need amplification at the school board meeting.
Clifford.
I, when it comes to the collective bargaining, I just know from my freshman year when I was on this Eddie, or my first year on this Eddie Council, you kind of follow the lead of the people that have been through it a few times. So yes, I am going to be very attentive, very cautious, and mindful of the, of the situation that we're in. And as I said before, I don't want to get ahead of anything. You know, you're not going to see me be a grand stand or on any particular position. And, and, and being in that position there, I know that there was a school board meeting, it was probably, I guess, within the last year, where they talked about the teachers' contract, and teachers were crying, I don't know if they were teachers or staff, but it's a real heavy deal. And you got to be mindful and sensitive to everybody involved, because even if you disagree with somebody's sentiment going into the meeting, if that person believes something, and that brings that person to tears, it is not your job to just tell them, "No, you're wrong, the world is like, like, like this." It's more of a world of explaining back to them what you've heard. And so they, so they know that you understand what they're saying and move forward from that point. And that's where I would want to be in the, in the, in the world of working with affected people that, that have to go, that are part of the collective bargaining process.
Leslie will be the first one to answer the next question. What is your philosophy regarding the district's reserve, and when do you think that it should be used?
Well, from what I have learned, you must keep a reserve of three percent. And the, a basic aid district, as I understand it, is, it is highly suggested that they keep a reserve of at least ten percent. Our reserve currently, I believe, is at thirteen percent from the last chart that I saw from CFAC last May. It was at thirteen percent. I think we have to be very mindful of the fact that that thirteen percent will go very quickly if we do not look at the budget as a whole and figure out how we're going to make this work long-term for our district. So I would probably not be in favor of using that reserve at this time to, to make a budget shortfall. I think we need to keep a solid reserve and look for other ways to make our budget whole and, and solid going forward and to continue to preserve this district and the excellent schools that we have. So I would not be in favor of using up our reserve, and I would be in favor of keeping the reserve at thirteen percent, or in fact, even growing it a little bit higher.
Clifford.
That was, that was a topic that I learned a lot during my school board version time. When you're on a revenue-based audit, you are assured of your funding or a certain amount of funding for the next year. When you're in the basic aid world, it's based upon the property taxes that come in, you get more, but it's kind of a crap shoot. So that's why if you stay in the basic aid world, we want to have a reserve of at least ten percent going forward. And, you know, I've served on the Board of Directors of the San Francisco Chamber of Commerce, and, and have been part of the Public Policy Committee for twenty years. So I've seen, and what I know is that you never want to go into your reserves at all, except for ongoing expenses that can occur in the following years. So if you are going to get into the reserve, it's for one-shot deals, like if this roof collapses here, you don't have insurance for it, and you go in your reserve to build the, the roof. You don't use your reserves to pay for ongoing expenses. And for somebody who no longer has his family business, I've kind of learned that lesson the hard way, and it's been really engraved into my heart. So I understand the concept of keeping a healthy reserve going forward.
Before I answer that question, I just want to say something that I forgot about the collective bargaining. And there's two things here. First of all, I don't believe in negotiations, that school board members should be present during negotiations, and they are not in Mill Valley, which is good, because if they're present, it becomes a lot more contentious. And then number two, principals, the last superintendent, provide a principal during negotiations. And I don't think that they should be in negotiations either, because I think it's just a very uncomfortable situation for them, since what the teachers benefit from during negotiations, the principals will benefit, even though they do represent the other side.